Welcome to the Bellevue Regular City Council Meeting for December 12, 2022. City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly. Would everyone please rise and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, there are 12 speakers pre-registered this evening. A couple of those are over our rules, so I'll go over the rules really quickly. Oral communications is to last for a period of no longer than 30 minutes, and each speaker will be allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three speakers will be allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. Looks like land use code amendments, the higher floor area ratio, does have four speakers signed up in support, so the fourth speaker will not be allowed. With that, I will call our first speaker, who is Jody Alberts. I believe is in person.
Good evening.
Hi.
Mayor Robinson and council members. My name is Jody Alberts, and I'm head of the Government Affairs for the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on tonight's study session items, particularly the FAR land use code amendment. These past several months, I've witnessed firsthand the exhaustive efforts by council and city staff in getting housing affordability right in Bellevue. Based off the materials that were provided for today's council meeting, on behalf of the chamber, I must say that I am confident that we are headed in the right direction. By using the incentive-based tools described, we can continue the success our community has seen with other similar programs at Bellevue such as MFT. What has been outlined in these materials will undoubtedly benefit our community collectively by creating an environment that incentivizes the free market to construct housing units at levels necessitated by those who desire to live and contribute to our city. Frankly, we would be remiss not to provide such opportunities as it not only helps those in need of housing, but it makes our city much more inclusive, improves our workforce with new talent and skill sets, and in turn helps our city and its businesses to flourish, improving overall livability for Bellevue. Given the important nature of this work and its time-sensitive nature, I hope that we will move with haste now and in the coming year on what has been outlined. In Phase 1 of the FAR LUCA, for example, addressing the projects with overlay zoning restrictions has been a high priority area, given the difficulties this has caused developers, keeping them from advancing forward critical projects. I hope that by moving forward with determination, we may be able to discuss priorities such as reconsidering FAR zoning in Belred in Phase 2, which is ample areas for opportunity if higher FARs can be fully utilized. The Chamber's Plush Committee remains committed to working with council and with staff to improve housing affordability and attainability in a sustainable manner. We hope to continue to remain a resource at the city's disposal as these incentive programs are created or as fee and lieu calibrations are determined. Again, I want to thank staff and council for their excellent efforts, and I'm thrilled to collaborate on the critical work ahead, so thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jesse Simpson, who I believe is joining us virtually. Mr. Simpson, if you're joining us, if you could use the raise hand function to identify yourself. Thank you. Okay, can you hear us now?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Hi, I'm Jesse Simpson, Government Relations and Policy Manager for the Housing Development Consortium. HDC convenes the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition, which includes more than 35 housing providers, service, community service providers, housing advocates, and other allied organizations across the east side. We appreciate the city of Bellevue's efforts to analyze effective policy solutions to advance housing affordability, and are committed to partnering with you to meet the housing needs of our neighbors and significantly increase the number of affordable homes available to Bellevue residents. Making a meaningful dent in the housing affordability crisis will take many policies, including those that directly reduce the cost of producing affordable units. I appreciate your efforts to reduce fees for affordable housing projects and applaud Bellevue for exploring this policy and urge council to move it forward. That said, we feel more needs to be done with the current proposed approach to increase allowed residential floor area ratio. We see this increase to allowable FAR as a great opportunity to address Bellevue's basic jobs-to-home imbalance, but we must incorporate strong affordability requirements alongside this increase to development capacity. When cities increase development capacity through upzones, a portion of that increased value can be captured for public benefit. Pairing mandatory inclusionary zoning with increases to development capacity, such as an increase to allowable FAR, offsets the cost of that affordability requirement and captures some of the added value for public benefit. Pairing affordability requirements with upzones leverages potential private real estate development, produces more affordable homes, and creates mixed-income communities. The flip side of all of this is that if an affordability requirement is not implemented at the time of the upzone, future efforts will be less fruitful, and the opportunity to capture that public benefit is lost. Finally, I understand that others at the East Side Housing Roundtable have testified to the importance of reforming development standards like increasing floor plate maximums and lot coverage ratios and reducing setbacks and step backs to ensure this increased FAR is useful throughout Bellevue. HDC supports these policies, but I'd like to highlight that, at least in downtown Bellevue, FAR is a major constraint on development capacity, and as such, this increase to floor area ratio must be paired with strong affordability requirements to maximize public benefits. Thank you for your time and thoughtful engagement on this issue.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jack McCullough, who's also joining us virtually. Mr. McCullough, can you hear me? Mr. McCullough, can you hear me?
Now I can hear you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Councilmembers, Jack McCullough here. Nice to have an opportunity to speak to you, unfortunately not personally. I just wanted to put in a vote for moving expeditiously on Phase 1 of the downtown measures in interim control. One of the words that we've talked about last many years here at council is nimble, and we have an opportunity to exercise that today. We're at an inflection point in the market, as many of you have seen. Bellevue's office market, which was one of the most robust in the United States only a year ago, has obviously dimmed, as has been true across the country. But the residential market remains strong, and so we have this opportunity, this unique opportunity with many projects in the city to try to provide some incentives in the immediate term to have these projects pivot from an office kind of program to a residential program. We're working with several of these now in downtown as well. And the opportunity that will be presented by the Phase 1 program, if it's implemented hopefully in the first quarter of 2023 as an interim control, will really, I think, accelerate this effort. I want to congratulate and thank staff who've been working closely on these measures. We think the concept is well tailored to be very attractive to several of these projects that can add potentially several hundred units of new housing downtown. So while there are larger picture issues to deal with in Phase 2, we really encourage you to move Phase 1 along as an interim control and do it, if possible, in the first quarter of 2023. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is Hal Ferris. Mr. Ferris, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Mayor Robinson and members of council, my name is Hal Ferris. I live in Bellevue, and my address is in the record. I'm a member of the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition. Thank you again for your time and service to our community. Our city is a better place as a result of your efforts. I strongly urge you not to provide the direction, as requested by staff, the agenda memo for item 22782 on your agenda this evening. The direction recommended by staff seeks to amend the land use code to increase housing over commercial development without addressing the priority to include affordable housing affordable to low and moderate income families as part of the land use code amendment. The next right work is the initiative by staff for the next right work of affordable housing, building on the implementation of the Affordable Housing Strategy approved by council in 2017. Affordable housing in each of these policies is focused on housing affordable to low and moderate income families. According to the Department of Commerce, moderate income families can earn up to 120% of area median income, which in King County is $120,000 per year. All housing is affordable to someone, but housing that is affordable to families willing to pay $5,000 or $10,000 a month for rent or mortgage payment is not considered affordable housing. In Bellevue right now, thousands of units are being built for families earning more than $120,000 per year. We do not need to provide increases to height and development capacity just to incentivize development of housing affordable to the most affluent members of our community. The direction to staff should include language that prioritizes and incentivizes the development of housing affordable to low and moderate income families. As Jack just said, the intense pressure for commercial development has cooled off. Many of the planned office developments in Bellevue may be converted to housing. This is a great time for the city to update the land use code to increase the housing capacity in our city with a portion of the new development capacity dedicated to affordable housing. An FAR in-density unit per acre upzone, when done in tandem with affordable requirement, can result in comprehensive residential housing growth and benefits for all citizens across all income levels. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Anthony Locke. Mr. Locke, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
Hi, good evening, members of the council. My name is Anthony Locke. I live on Southeast 42nd Street in Bellevue, over in South Bellevue. I'm calling on behalf of support for the Capital Investment Program for Sewers for 2023 to 2029 Septic Budget Systems around specifically the project around subsection S117. This is specifically around the extension from 120th Street to the rest of the communities who are interested in joining the overall sewer system. What we have right now is a load of stories from my neighbor who's been a 40, almost 40-year resident from here, and she's actually busy right now working at the Overlake Hospital. She shared this personal story and asked me to share it with you tonight. The septic tanks, she said, is failing and backing up in areas, and she's worried about a health hazard. In her personal experience, and she's lived here since the 1960s, it's been, she's never gotten the chance to offer to connect to the main 120th line, and she's wanted to see if we were overlooked in the process. In her situation, she shared with me that she's unable to meet her needs to have a dishwasher, as well as because she believes her own personal septic tank can't handle it. She is looking to retire very soon and is hopeful to be able to add a second bathroom, as well as overcome some of the health issues in the area. She's heard of personal stories from some of our neighbors who have had overloads, as well as situations where they've had failing situations, and hope that we can prioritize, again, in the Capital Improvement Program, Subproject S117. In my own personal story, my family and I, we moved here and had a recent child in the area. And since the pandemic, our working situation has now all of us actually working from home because of just the way technology works. And so we also are looking forward to have an opportunity to join the septic, move from septic to sewer, so we can expand our area and continue to flourish in the Bellevue area. Thank you again for your time, and we hope that you're able to prioritize this project, and I'll yield the time back to the others who aren't interested.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list was Clifford Coffin, and unfortunately, we've already heard three people in support of that topic, which was the higher floor area ratio. So I would encourage you to email your comments to council@bellevuewa.gov. Going on to the next speaker is Craig Speel, who is joining us virtually. Mr. Speel, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Good evening.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Good evening. My name is Craig Speel. I live in the Lockhaven Community and have been a resident of Bellevue for over eight years. I'm speaking tonight regarding the status of the curb management plan and concerns regarding the proposed curb pricing and its impact to our residential neighborhoods. First, I would like to acknowledge and thank the Transportation Department, Plan Department, and the Transportation Commission for all their hard work in this plan. As they have identified, online shopping, ride hailing, employee shuttles, and delivery services, as well as micro-mobility providers, all compete for limited curb space and public fundages. Today, the lack of designated loading zones creates confusion and adds to the traffic congestion. While the CMP acknowledges the aggregate impact of these uses, it is unclear how curb pricing will solve or mitigate them. In the current public draft, the CMP does not appear to address the unintended consequences, including spill over traffic and parking in adjacent restricted parking zones. Second, it is also unclear how curb pricing may shift demand to use of existing free neighborhood parks, which are often at full capacity. While the competent plan section on transportation acknowledges the need for these neighborhood protections, TR 141 through TR 149, today few, if any, of these recommendations have been codified or provided resources for protection or proactive enforcement. Further, as acknowledged by the Transportation Department, the pricing analysis provided to you needs further review. As stated in October, these estimates are very high-level, and specific park and curb management program proposal is outside the scope of the curb management plan effort. I encourage the commission and the traffic departments to refine the planning and forecast to account for these issues and related costs, including RPZ park enforcement. Second, I suggest further exploration is needed in the creation of ride-share drop-off zones, as well as designated hours for merchants and restaurants to help reduce congestion. And third, I request more granular data be provided to the community for review. I look forward to working with the Transportation Department, the Transportation Commission, and other stakeholders towards these goals, enhancing the livability and the vibrancy of our city and its neighborhoods. And I also would like to personally thank all the council members for all their hard work over this past year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker on our list is joining us here in person. That's Pamela Johnston.
Pamela Johnston, 3741 122nd Avenue Northeast. I want to start out by talking about Bellevue's housing goals. I'm very thankful that we have seven neighborhood engagement experts in front of me tonight. One of the things that we look at is things that come from staff, but I look at the things that come from council because no matter what happens in the next years, you're going to be the ones making the final decision, and you're the ones that get out, look for votes, and look for what we really need in this community. I don't understand why our council vision under the housing goals is a lot about what King County wants, and under the council vision, it's we celebrate our aspects of our culture. We are living an equitable community. Why was neighborhoods left out of that? You have a good statement in here that said our city has a right of unique neighborhoods that are safe and inclusive. So why aren't those in the housing goals? There's something strange about what's going on because what I understand is this Bellevue is made up of growth corridors and older neighborhoods. And people who came in here and built their neighborhoods, came and lived in their house since 1968, '69, came for a specific neighborhood. Now, new people are coming into the community. Those people have a different option. Their options are based on new things that are here. Apartments, a lot of people love to live in apartments, but some people don't love to live in apartments. They want less crowded areas. So that's a challenge. In the growth corridors, when we're asked where to put the housing, where, 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 but don't put it in the growth corridors. When we're told that we need to put in 35,000 new homes, that we're told, oh, but that we're not, don't count Wilberton upzone. Don't count Factoria upzone. We can't look at those. We need to put 35,000 elsewhere. It doesn't make sense to me, and I'd like your help in figuring it out. Thank you.
At this point, we have heard from Clifford Coffin, and he has signed up actually in opposition or has concerns. So that was just an incorrect registration, so I am going to call his name now. Mr. Coffin, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Excellent. So my apologies for the mix-up. My name is Cliff Coffin. I'm the Actuance and Policy Manager for Habitat for Humanity, Seattle, King, Kids, S. County, and we're one of the founding partners of the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition, a longtime permanent affordable housing developer in King County, and particularly in Bellevue and around the east side. And first of all, I want to thank the council for its work tonight. The need for affordable housing for lower-income and middle-income households is great, and it's growing even greater every single day. But we have an amazing opportunity right here to make sure everyone has a safe and affordable housing to live. As cheesy as that might sound, that's the reality. We know we have an affordable housing crisis when we can either hit, get, slam dunk, or we can miss the mark. And we do applaud the city for exploring reducing permitting fees for affordable housing projects, and we urge council to move forward with not just that, but also bolder vision by adding affordability measures to increases in residential floor area ratio allowances. Adding density through an increase to residential FAR is a necessary step in the right direction, but on its own, it's not sufficient to effectively address affordable housing needs. The importance of affordable housing requirement to any change that increases development capacity cannot be understated. And if that affordability isn't in place for an upzone or for another development capacity increase of that sort, then we would not just lose an opportunity to capture the public benefit of being able to harness the market to build more affordable housing, but we may also do harm to those who are most vulnerable to the housing crisis, particularly those essential workers like nurses and firefighters and teachers who we depended on during the pandemic to get us through. So if affordability isn't in place at time of these upzones and it increases floor area ratio, then we're doing ourselves a disservice. And the data is clear that mandatory inclusionary zoning is more effective in producing affordable homes than simply voluntary policies or incentives. In fact, Bellevue passed, so I'll just wrap this up by saying Bellevue in the past has instituted this and was able to produce a sizable amount of affordable housing. And more importantly, this can also reduce economic and social segregation in the city as well, and make sure that we can put people in areas of economic opportunity and create a more inclusive environment for everyone. And there's agreement that development standards.
Mr. Coffin? Sorry, you've reached your time.
I appreciate the council's consideration on this matter.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Smithi Darmarajan, who is joining us, I believe, virtually. Mr. Darmarajan, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time begins now.
Okay, great, thank you. Hi, council members. I am a Bellevue resident. My family and I currently live on Southeast 42nd Street in Greenwich Crest. And as you heard from my neighbor, Mr. Anthony Locke, just earlier, I'm here to talk about moving to approve the proposal under the Capital Investment Program for the septic system to sewer extension. As he mentioned, our whole street is on septic, and our homes are from the '50s. So everyone on our street are families with kids who now mostly work from home and have been very interested in joining the rest of the community sewer link-up and removal away from the septic, mainly to avoid health risks and also allow for better expansions for our growing home uses. Additionally, our septic systems are old, and the capacity isn't there for adding more bathrooms and water services as it is. Specifically for our particular home, we can only run one water appliance at a time without losing significant pressure in the other. We've also had backups from the toilet into our shower that we privately paid to get fixed. This is causing an extreme hardship and an undue burden on us as we try to modernize our homes, but continue to be kept off-grid. As Anthony had mentioned, another neighbor of ours, Joyce, who has been here for almost 50 years, when our main street had the option to connect to the sewer, the side street wasn't given the option to do so. We're one of the only ones in our neighborhood. There's multiple side streets off of 120 Avenue that have all been hooked up to the sewer, so leaving us behind and, you know, causing a lot of issues as we try to, you know, continue to be Bellevue residents and obviously invest in our own homes. We've been talking to Doug Lane, as well as Sean Wells, who are on the Bellevue Utility Planning Management Team to discuss this proposal. But obviously, we need the council's approval of the budget with the specific focus on our street that's already in there for this sewer extension in order to move this forward. So we hope you're able to, you know, meet us at this issue and hopefully provide some relief to myself, as well as all the neighbors on the street. So thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, the next speaker on our list this evening is Madhokarana Reddy Tumari. Mr. Tumari, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you. Hello, city council members. I wish to draw your attention to large errors in Resolution 10198, denying the PBR's application for my property. Firstly, the resolution does not provide even one proper ineligibility reason to deny our property's classification as open space land under RCW 84.34 that states open space land means any land area the preservation of which would conserve and enhance natural resources. There are no exclusions for easements in the law. Instead, the resolution denies the property's classification under open space land for categories we never claimed. Secondly, the resolution in Section 1, Part 1, claims that the revenue loss of $443 per year from this property would be a huge burden on the city of Bellevue's $2.2 billion budget. This is an exaggeration. The truth is that there have not been, and there will likely never be, many more, many other Bellevue City applicants to this PBRs program. Thirdly, city of Bellevue chose to assess this application under Washington State's RCW 8434, when our application was to King County's PBRs program. Such a switch is not supported in the laws and code. Denying our PBRs application under RCW 8434 does not extend that our application is also denied under PBRs as specifically required for actioning by King County's PBRs of this Bellevue City Council. The PBRs criteria were never evaluated by the city of Bellevue towards this application. Finally, 1,450 King County households, several such being single-family R1 properties and some within Bellevue, have been in PBRs. Bellevue City Council, this resolution has no valid PBRs and RCW 8434 ineligibility reasons to support this denial. Therefore, this denial resolution is arbitrary, capricious, and discriminating under U.S. law. Per the U.S. Congress website, with our Constitution annotated with equal protection clause case law on property tax rights, there must be no discrimination in favor of one as against another of the same class from Keeney versus New York, 1912, Tax Commissioners versus Jackson, 1931. An owner aggrieved by discrimination is entitled to have his assessment reduced to the common level from Sioux City Bridge versus Dakota County, 1923. Bellevue City Council, your vote denies me equal protection of the laws as required by the United States Constitution's 14th Amendment, Section 1. I have contacted the United States Government's Department of Justice's Civil Rights Division of this incident. I will now also be contacting other legislative and judicial officials, officers, and venues for requesting a review of this denial decision. It is a disappointment that a simple $443 of native tree and plant infusion and conservation to our part of this earth face this torment of resistance by you, Bellevue City Council. to our part of this earth face this torment of resistance by you, Bellevue City Council. We will need a fairer approach to bring in some reason on this topic as all efforts by your own Bellevue City Administration, King County, and I have been misunderstood by you. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker on our list is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihail, my dirty damn Nazi, democracy fascist criminal and bandita, a mafia. My name, Alex Zimmerman. You're pure crook and criminal. And I give you right now a few examples so people can know what is going on. Next year is election. So I demand what is everybody who will go for election will post to be in Bellevue dot com. It's supposed to be page, but it's open to everybody who go for elections so people know who's his people. This number one. Number two, you need to stop in this ten, thirty minute and ten people because it's pure crook what is you doing. Six year ago, it is give you more privilege. By definition, you are criminal. It's exactly what's happened, all of you. Number three, last week, Council John Stoker presented a regional council. It's very unique. I never can imagine how this happened. So this regional council last week made decision about couple dozen million dollars. Taxes and no public hearing. He's a pure criminal. You cannot approve taxes without public hearing. And he presented this meeting for many years. And for last seven years, you know what it mean? Seven months, what is he present is no public hearing. Is this all about taxes? You are a criminal. You are a bandita. It's exactly what, as I speak right now, two hundred and fifty thousand people who live in Bellevue. We need clean this dirty chamber from this bandita, from this mafia. It's only one chance, come America back to normal. Is this exactly what's happened? How we can do in this? I demand to everybody, listen to everybody, go for election for twenty-three. More people will become. We will have a forum every two weeks or every month. So we can do in this right now after New Year so everybody can come and talk, and you know what it mean? It's only one chance, clean this chamber from this criminal, from this bandita who's in this chamber for thirty years. Ah, Soviet Union Politburo? Who sit in chamber for thirty years? You don't be ashamed, sit in chamber for thirty years. This is exactly what is we need doing. We need clean this chamber totally. No more than two years, two times, that's it. And Commissioner have this for two times. So our Commissioner, Bellevue Commissioner, have two times, and you don't have two times. So right now, I speak to everybody who listen to me. Stand up, hundred fifty thousand idiot, pardon. Stop acting like a idiot. Clean this dirty chamber in twenty-three. Totally what is as possible. Stand up, America, stand up. It's exactly only one chance for everybody.
We do have just enough time to hit our final speaker, which is Dr. Sue Mercer.
Good evening, councilman. I can't hear me. Can you hear me? Okay. I wish to meet with all of you sometime before the twelfth of January, when I will be going back to Jamaica. And how long I'm going to be there, I can't tell you because it depends on how much I get done when I'm there. And as soon as I get back, I'm planning to go to Kenya. So I can talk to you by WhatsApp if, uh, we can't meet personally. But I really need to talk to you about coordinating with King County and the state legislature on the issues of homelessness, mental health, and addiction recovery. Having worked with the homeless for probably more than thirty years and having lived on Southeast Twentieth Place off a hundred and fifty-sixth above Fort Phantom Lake since nineteen sixty-nine, I am familiar with Bellevue. And when I moved in, it was an affordable neighborhood. At the time, I was earning five thousand a, a, a year, and my husband, a Boeing employee, uh, engineer, was earning seven thousand a year. And we could afford a twenty-five thousand dollar house. I don't think even Boeing engineers can afford to buy a house in, in Bellevue anymore, which is very sad. And, yeah, there were several teachers in the neighborhood. We couldn't afford a house on Mercer Island where I had been teaching. And that's why we moved to Bellevue. Now people have to live in North Bend to be able to. And even there, things are too expensive, but, yeah. You are working on the affordable housing thing. One of the things I'd like you to look at in the future is not giving any permits to building any high-rise stuff in downtown Bellevue that takes up a lane of traffic. We paid for these streets a long time ago, and I would like to be able to use them. And it makes me angry when a whole lane is blocked off because somebody's building a building. Please, make your permits so that any traffic that has to do with bringing in cement or whatever is done at night, not during the business day. Think about that when you're issuing permits. But make sure that any money that's spent by the city for mental health and addiction recovery is well-spent. That, that, you know, sound mental health is not a good institution. We've got to have better mental health. And I can't tell you about the addiction recovery programs that we have because I've-
Ms. Mercer?
Been retired for a while.
Your time is-
Thank you.
You've reached the end of your time. That is the end of our communications this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Glad we got everybody squeezed in there. Uh, next up, uh, the city manager. You put something in our packet on the comprehensive plan periodic update and Wilberton Vision Implementation, which I read. It's very interesting. Thank you very much. Um, so other than that, you have no presentation to give us?
That's correct.
Okay. So now we are on to the Parks Levy Recognition, which I wanted to give Councilmember John Stokes an opportunity to speak to.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's my pleasure to like to talk about this. Uh, you know, at the end of November, King County elections certified that Proposition One, the Bellevue Parks Levy passed with over fifty-five percent of the vote. And, uh, as he lays on to the Parks Board and a former member of the Parks Board, along with the mayor, back in two thousand eight, we passed the levy, which has really made the city much, much more livable, and we're progressing forward from this one. I'm very excited to be here tonight and recognize the people who made this happen because it just doesn't happen by itself. First and foremost, a big thank you to Bellevue voters for seeing the future of our park system as a core value to our city. The levy will help Bellevue preserve open space, add parks, and plan for a new great aquatic center among, and, and recreation and sports areas and trails. And I could go on for probably another five minutes on that. Among several priorities identified in the Parks and Open Space System Plan. And thank you to the people who championed the levy and built support for it to pass, including the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, led by Executive Director Joe Fain, Vice President of Government Affairs, Jody Alberts, Director of Communications, Sam Jones, and Joe Woods with Pacific Public Affairs. And thank you very much to the members of the Pro Committee who also, uh, worked on the Pro Statement and the Voters Pamlet, Kevin Wallace, Sherry Rinland, and Giovanna Aris, and also worked on the campaign. And, uh, I'd also like to recognize the Levy Campaign Committee Chair, Dave Hamilton, who in his capacity as a Bellevue resident, championed the Parks Ballot Initiative. And thanks to the many other committee members who helped them with the levy. Also, Parks and Recreation Advocates, were engaged in this, and we're excited to continue our efforts to improve our parks and open space to ensure Bellevue remains a great community and Bellevue will continue to be the city and the park. So thank you to everybody. Thank you to the public and to, uh, really the whole city of Bellevue and to the individuals who get out there and work hard to make these things happen. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Stokes. And I believe we have a request for a remote participation from Councilmembers on for our January ninth meeting. Uh, is there a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the remote, excuse me, participation of Councilmembers on during the January ninth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and then Deputy Mayor, you have two appointment recommendations tonight for the Human Services Commission.
I do indeed. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it's an honor to bring, uh, four, two outstanding individuals that call Bellevue home to serve on the Human Services Commissions tonight. Uh, first one is Akshay Jain, who's an immigrant from India, has a master's degree in actuarial science and finance, and was the first ever Miss India USA in twenty-twenty-two, which launched her interest in work around many nonprofits and, uh, on different causes around Bellevue and the East Side, but primarily targeting children's well-being and education and supporting women in our community. And most recently, devoting a lot of our time serving the homeless through A Empowering. Uh, the second individual is Chad Halsted. He's a global technology consultant for multinational corporations, but is now with the Department of Agriculture focused on rural development, helping address the needs of Black, Indigenous, and people of color and underserved communities with affordable housing, internet access, and farming solutions. He's been active with numerous regional nonprofits since moving his family to Bellevue eight years ago. And he's currently on the Board of Directors of Eastside Christian School in Bellevue. So with that, I move to appoint Chad Halsted to a partial term on the Human Services Commission expiring May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And then, uh, seek to appoint Akshay Jain to a partial term on the Human Services Commission expiring May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Okay. So the motion is for those two appointments?
Correct.
And that's been seconded. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, congratulations to our two new commissioners. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have three steady session items, but we're only going to hear about two of them because the third one's in the packet. So let's have the first one introduced, please, Mr. Miyake.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, council members. The first, uh, topic is the proposal to initiate amendments to the Land Use Code to allow higher floor area ratio or density for certain residential uses and to consider tools to achieve affordable housing with that FAR increase. Tonight's staff is seeking council consideration to initiate the work to bring these amendments back at a future council meeting. By way of background, in July of this year, council prioritized three Next Right Work actions to further increase housing production as well as affordable housing opportunities in the city. And this item is one of those three actions. So joining us this evening is Liz Stedt, our, uh, co-director in our Development Services Department. She's joined by Nick Whipple, who's the Planning Manager, and Matthew Menard, Senior Planner. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to you, Liz, to kick us off.
Thank you, City Manager. And good evening, council. Uh, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse. We're happy to be here tonight with some exciting projects. We have two for this evening, but we'll start tonight first with the allowance of higher FAR for residential projects. This is something that you may remember came out of the work that we were directed to move forward with from Next Right Work. And so it's, uh, we keep peeling away at these projects, and this is the one for tonight. We have been working very closely with community development on this as well and utilizing some of the work that they know about for affordable housing to inform this project this evening. This is also an opportunity that I want to make sure everyone's aware of. You did hear this during city, during the public testimony or the comments this evening, a lot about an opportunity to use any sort of increased FAR to actually get back a public benefit in the form of affordable housing. And if you'll remember, I was here on November fourteenth with Director Kaderman and Emile King. We talked about some of the tools that are available. And this is exactly what we were kind of setting the conversation up for, is this opportunity that we have to tie increased density to affordable housing. So it's a great opportunity that we're looking forward to explore further with all of you. You will see that we have, uh, broken this project into two phases. One includes an interim official control, which will allow us to move more quickly on some of the downtown work for those projects that are ready for application so we can take advantage of a unique moment in time and get some projects on the ground running quickly and get that benefit back as well. So I'm going to go ahead and pass this on to Nick Whipple, who will be doing our PowerPoint presentation along with Matthew Menard, who he will pass on to shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. And good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Noonhouse, and members of the council. Um, so for tonight's presentation, we are seeking direction from council to initiate work on interim land use code amendments for downtown as well as code amendments to allow for higher floor area ratios in certain land use districts and direct the Planning Commission to process this land use code amendment. So for tonight's presentation, we wanted to provide some context and background in terms of where this project is coming from. We'll also talk about the objectives that we are aiming to achieve here with this, uh, land use code amendment. And as Liz mentioned, we've broken this up into two phases. So we'll, um, walk through Phase One and the approach there and timing, and then Phase Two as well, and then how those two phases work together with an overall timeline. So to start us out with some of the context, so, um, as, as noted in public comment earlier, there, there is a current market preference for office development in Bellevue, which is, it's beginning to cool, but, um, we have seen quite a surge in office development over residential development in particular. And we are in need of more housing. So, uh, we are, uh, in the process with the, the Comp Plan Periodic Update of planning for, um, thirty-five thousand or more housing units within the twenty-nineteen to twenty-forty-four planning period. That process is also evaluating, you know, how that might be added. This effort is a, a good opportunity to, um, look at increases in floor area ratios for residential development to help, um, kind of, uh, tip the, the scales, as it were, um, on those mixed-use properties where office is competing with residential development. Uh, this also provides an opportunity for us to boost affordable housing supply. Any opportunity when you are providing an increase in density is that, um, right time to take a look at what affordability tools you might be able to implement to, um, in- increase the supply of affordable housing in the city. So we see that as a, a good opportunity here with this effort. In terms of, um, background, so this is an item that council selected on July fifth as a part of the Next Right Work. The action itself was to allow for a higher FAR or density for residential to incentivize residential development over commercial developments. Uh, this, uh, action tonight is also responsive to the Affordable Housing Strategy, Action D Three, which does call for the city to, um, change its approach to density calculation in multifamily zones to allow more flexibility in unit size and type. So you'll see as part of this scope, um, we are looking to change the, the calculation in our mixed-use areas. So we're getting away from, or aiming to get away from a dwelling unit per acre control and instead use the same, uh, density control that commercial development uses, which is the floor area ratio. So for objectives, um, we are looking to provide more or an increase in the floor area ratio for residential development, encourage residential development by making it more economically competitive through this code amendment. Uh, we're also looking, um, to be responsive to some of the feedback we've been hearing, particularly in downtown and our perimeter overlays, where there's some challenges in utilizing the full, um, density that's provided in those perimeter overlays. There's some, some form constraints that are, um, kind of, uh, challenging to, to get that full FAR out. So, um, this would be looking to address some of those projects. And then also, um, allow some of these residential projects to move forward, particularly in the downtown with Phase One. Um, we've heard there are some, um, with the market changing, some projects interested in flipping to residential. Um, so we're trying to find ways to kind of help that along as well with Phase One. So, uh, I will have Matthew now walk us through, uh, this proposed scope for both Phase One and Phase Two.
Thanks, Nick. Uh, as Nick mentioned, we are breaking this into two phases, or we're proposing to break it into two phases. I'll begin with Phase One. Uh, Phase One is narrowly tailored to the downtown land use districts. Uh, we are proposing an IOC, uh, to get this done quickly, as Nick mentioned, to allow proposed residential projects to move forward. Also, to use downtown as a, as a test ground essentially for Phase Two, uh, so we can make sure that- for Phase Two, so we can make sure that these proposed changes are meeting our goals of increasing both housing and affordable housing within the city. The proposed amendments to the land use code would be increasing allowed floor area ratio throughout downtown, updating the affordable housing exemption. As many of the public comments noted, this is an opportunity to explore those tools that we can use to increase affordable housing throughout downtown. That is certainly a plan of this update, and I do apologize if we didn't make that clear enough for the public. So making sure that as we do this, those increases to FAR are commensurate with some updates to the Affordable Housing Program that we already have downtown to ensure that we do get affordable housing production through this update. And then finally, some flexibility on allowing FAR to be moved around specific sites that are in the perimeter overlay or potentially in the perimeter overlay and not within the perimeter overlay, so we have a few sites downtown that sort of cover all of those overlay districts which are running into form constraints rather than FAR constraints, which is limiting their residential development, so making sure we solve some of those issues on projects that are more or less ready to go. So the engagement plan for downtown, we want to make sure we engage with downtown residents. We always want to be informing the public and making sure they're aware of what's happening with any updates. We want to discuss with affordable housing developers and groups, many of which we program tonight, and developers, to make sure that we are calibrating this properly, to make sure we're encouraging both housing and affordable housing production, and we also want to use their extensive knowledge to make sure that we're hitting those marks as we do move forward this quite quickly. We're not going to have time to do substantial studies, so using the existing knowledge to make sure that we get it right. And then we do want to utilize online engagement, which is our standard process, so websites to make sure the public's informed again, some direct engagement as well with specific stakeholders downtown, and then small group sessions with some existing groups, Chamber of Commerce, existing downtown association groups like that. And then when we come back for the study session for the IOC, we will present that engagement to Council, so we make sure we're all on the same page when we come back, and it gives Council a chance to evaluate our engagement as well as what we propose after that engagement. So moving on to the process, we do intend to bring this back for council review in a study session, so we would launch tonight and then come back for a study session, and then after that study session, move towards adoption. Proposed timeline for this is Q2 of 2023. State law does require that we have a public hearing for any IOC we adopt within sixty days of that adoption. Moving on to Phase Two, the geographic scope is targeted mixed-use districts. This does not include East Main, which has recently been updated. It does not include Wilburton, which has ongoing updates, which you are all aware of, and it does not include Bell Red, which also has the ongoing Bell Red Look Forward.
Can you go back, leave that slide up for just a little bit longer?
Yeah, sorry, I accidentally hit the button there. We're still on this slide. So it does include the conversion of mixed-use districts that are dwelling units per acre, so there are several mixed-use districts that utilize dwelling units per acre to limit density, converting those to FAR just for consistency with other mixed-use districts in the land use code. It does propose creating or updating affordable housing programs. Within those, again, we are trying to encourage or require affordable housing for the utilization of these bonus programs, so as we allow for more FAR, requiring that as developers want to use that FAR, that they have to provide affordable housing with that increase. We are intending to retain form standards as much as possible to make sure that the aesthetic impacts on the community are minimized, and that was the original scope presented to you on July fifth. And the final item of Phase Two is to adopt permanent regulations from what we've learned through the IOC, so that would include those downtown regulations. Phase Two engagement is intended to be quite a bit broader than Phase One, and is a larger area of the city, and they are permanent regulations. We would study the impacts of the IOC, leaning on what worked with the IOC, and maybe making some changes to those things that may not have worked. The plan is to hold small group meetings with developers and affordable housing providers and advocates, again, to make sure we're striking that right balance between housing production and affordable housing production, making sure we're well-informed on the tools, just creating dialogue between those groups. And then we would like to get input from residents, neighborhood associations, community organizations. Again, they're going to have that deep knowledge of who's going to be living in these buildings, what's our best approach to the more affordable housing aspect of this update, working internally to make sure that we fully understand implications to administration of our code and implications to any sort of urban design changes we may need to make through the form standards, and then having regularly scheduled meetings with existing groups, so they are kept updated throughout this process, and they're aware of dates and any upcoming public meetings that we may be having. And we do have an extensive engagement planned, just to make sure this is a community-based process, and we want to make sure that everyone's informed, is on board, and we get the best knowledge from the community that we can bring to you. So finally, before I hand it back to Liz, the timeline for this project, Phase One again is expected to be completed in Q2. Phase Two launching tonight, there'll be a lot of background work, but Phase Two does rely on the final EIS for the comp plan periodic update release, so we'll do background work until that is released, and then starting the Planning Commission process for Phase Two, which will follow our standard Luca process, so it will go through Planning Commission and come back to Council as well. That is expected to be completed by the end of quarter one of 2024. And with that, I will hand it back to Liz for completion and wrap-up of this Luca.
Thank you, Matthew. One of the things that we are, you might have noticed, we're trying out this IOC as a test, so we can try some of these things on and be innovative, and then come back with the permanent regulations and put things into the code. So it's a little bit different than maybe how we've approached some other things in the past, but I think it gives us more flexibility and more ability to just move on some things and get things moving forward quickly, so we're excited about that. So tonight, we're here to ask you to provide initiation and provide us direction and some, I'll be taking some notes, and at the end, I'll make sure that we've gathered all of your direction in one piece, but to start the work on the interim land use code amendment, and then also the permanent Phase Two code amendments to increase the higher FAR throughout the city in the mixed-use locations. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You know what, I'm going to indulge myself and start, because I don't usually do that, but this is such an opportunity. I mean, I pushed for affordable housing to be in our downtown livability. That didn't happen. I pushed for it to happen when we upzoned our entire downtown, and it didn't happen then, and now I feel like maybe tonight's my night, or at least when we finally vote this in. So I would like to see, can we require affordable housing for any residential development, and can we require a fee in lieu to go towards affordable housing for any residential, I mean, excuse me, any commercial development? So that would be for the Phase One. And then for the Phase Two, you know, when we've increased FAR or heights in the past, it's followed with a very strong development boom, and I look at, I think Old Bellevue is included in this multi-use district for Phase Two, and do we have any design guidelines for that area? I would hate to just see a bunch of development go in and tear out all the old buildings, and Old Bellevue would be this sign that doesn't make sense anymore. So do we have that in place? Do we need to put that in the comp plan, or is anybody talking about maintaining character of neighborhoods while we increase the ability to develop in these areas?
As this code amendment, the suite of code amendments is...
I'm sorry, Liz, you'll have to pull that microphone to you.
I'm sorry, yeah, I've been battling some sinus infections, so my apologies, but I'll try and speak up. As this code amendments were envisioned, we were not planning to actually revise any of the standards around bulk and form, so all of the existing, all of those standards would remain in place, and all the existing design guidelines and everything else that exists across the, you know, the city, both in downtown and in these other mixed-use neighborhoods, would still apply. So we do have a lot of design guidelines that would, you know, actually speak to exactly what you're talking about, Mayor.
Okay, so my last question is, if we were able to require affordable housing for residential development and a fee in lieu for commercial, how do you encourage residential over commercial? Is there a trick to doing that, or does that happen on its own, or?
I can start out on that, and then I'll let it bite either Nick or Matthew if you have any comments, but I do want to address the fee in lieu for commercial. Because we are not suggesting any additional FAR for commercial, it would be challenging at this point to require some sort of fee in lieu. Now, that could be, you know, a post-phase, and when we're looking at other things through Wilburton and some of the other areas where we are looking at some of those upzones, but I think it would be challenging today, the way we're set up, to add that into the scope of work.
Okay, so this is just for residential?
Correct. This is just for residential.
Okay, that's my fault.
In terms of what makes the difference, you know, to push somebody to residential versus a commercial development, a lot of it is what is their return going to be for most of the development community? So if we can get to a point where the residential, they can build more residential, it starts to make sense where they're like, okay, I get a better return on this residential than I would get on the commercial. I know that's a very simplistic explanation, and I'm certainly not an economist, but there's a lot of levers to pull, and some of that is how much floor area do you exempt for residential? Some of it is what is the FAR that's allowed? Some of it is, you know, trying to think through, what is the ratio that's appropriate if you are going to require affordable housing as a portion of that up between the today's maximum and anything in the future? So all of those will play into it, and we will be working with all of those stakeholders to kind of figure out what is that best, what are those best numbers for downtown? And then those numbers are all going to vary as we go out from downtown as well, so a lot of work, further work to be included in that answer.
Great, okay, thank you. Who would like to? Councilmember Stokes will just go down the line.
Yeah, okay, this is very, very, very exciting, and glad, I think there's been some confusion a little bit about what we were, the terms of what we're doing actually, and we've had some communications from outside, kind of, you know, questioning how we're working on this, so I think you really explained it a lot better. Sometimes you have to go through these things, we're trying to figure this out, and that's why we have study sessions. I think it's very exciting. I, and I think we're doing things that, yes, we've been talking about for a long time, and that's the only thing, time, time is a concern. Things have changed so quickly in the last half decade. It just concerns me a little bit, why does it take us, like, going on two years to get this done? It doesn't sound like a really, I guess this is the thing, you're trying to, you're looking at it, and I understand that, from how do we get this done? And we're looking at it from a more of a way to, we need this now, how can we accelerate this and do it in a way that accomplishes the goals and meets the criteria? And I don't know, if we could come up with a solution to that, we could, it would be great, but it does concern me. We're right now at the end of, we've been working on this for some time, we have this new concept, we're right at the end of 2022, and we're talking about not actually putting this in place in 2024. And it's hard to tell what's going to be happening in 2024, but as we see what's going around now, change is fast, and faster and faster, and I just, I mean, we have the concepts, and we want to do this stuff, and we have the theories, and we have all the material, but the reality is that we have to somehow in there work so we can do this in a way that meets all the criteria, gets all the input, but doesn't take back and forth. I mean, we spent things in the past, we had fifteen meetings on something we could have done in about three or four, and if there's some way you can help us, and we can help you in terms of how do we, how do we do a better job of doing it right, doing it well, getting what we need, but not taking forever to do it? And I get a lot of, you know, questions about that from people in the public about this, because, you know, we're looking at downtown Bellevue that wasn't here a couple of years ago, and it took us about a decade to get the planning and the permits and everything else for downtown livability to happen. So I'm just raising this right now, because we're talking about this, and how do we make it work, go fast, and how we can help that, and how you can help us get to a point where we can accomplish these goals at a time when we need it, because the push on affordable housing is just not going to stop, and it's getting worse, and every day it gets worse, and the building desire for offices and all is kind of in limbo right now in a sense, but it's pushing, it's going to push here. So that's my big concern, and appreciate the work, it's really a good program, a good, you know, good outline in this, so I'm just seeing if we can work together to see if we can get this done in a rational time period. Thank you.
So I guess Councilmember Stokes is asking how we can speed this up, but do you mean beyond the schedule that they just showed us?
Yeah, I mean, from now on, twenty, end of 2022, and we're talking about doing it maybe in 24, and I know as these things happen, we usually end up...
Do you want to put the schedule back up on the screen so we can look at what he's talking about?
Yes, it's March of, we adopted Luca in March of 24, and we're in December 22 right now. I'm just saying, a year and a third is a long time. I'm just looking at how can we, we don't have the time, because every day we get behind. That's my concern. Yeah, is there anything we can do to help with that, anything we can look at it as approaches? And you just do a terrific job, and I just...
Okay.
You know, that's all I'm looking at, thank you.
So we're looking at whether or not we're going to initiate this work, and do you want to respond to the pace? Is there any way to expedite it?
You know, I appreciate that sentiment, Councilmember Stokes, and certainly it's a sentiment that we share about trying to get the work done more quickly, and really that's why we were proposing to do the interim official control. We knew there were projects that would take advantage of it quickly, and we wanted to make sure we could serve that and be, as one of our callers said, be nimble. So we do, we did try to reflect that through the use of the IOC, where we could test out some of these, but I will be honest, I think the, you know, fourteen-month schedule that you see up there is actually very ambitious. There are a lot of financial considerations, a lot of economic analysis and such that are going to have to go into this, especially when we're looking at so many different zoning districts, so we're looking at, you know, just such a wide variety, and as I mentioned earlier, each one is going to have its own special needs. So absolutely, we will always look for any way we can move this along more quickly, and I really appreciate your comments around how you as a body can help also. So we will be trying to move this forward as quickly as possible, and I hope that the IOC is also somewhat responsive to your comments.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Zon.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the work that you've done to really frame this in the Phase One, Phase Two, and really how to be more nimble, because I think that now is absolutely the time, I guess the best time would have been past, but the next best time is right now. So, because I do see that the pressure is changing a bit for the commercial development, so how we actually leverage that softening of the commercial market to be able to incentivize more residential is going to be really important. I like the fact that it's an early and fast win of Q2 of 23, so if it can be earlier in the Q2, then later Q2 would be really helpful. I also appreciate the comments and the clarification you gave about what we're trying to do, and that any far increase really must be commensurate with the affordable housing tools that we have to make sure that we're getting the public benefit. It wasn't as clear to me when I read the packet and the ask, where it seemed to talk more about how we are trying to incentivize residential over commercial. more about how we are trying to incentivize residential over commercial. And what I really heard tonight was that, that is one aspect of it, but really the thing we're doing is pairing the FAR increase with affordable housing, so that we're actually getting permanently affordable housing in the city. That, to me, is, is the main thing, providing flexibility, removing barriers, so that developers are able to take advantage of that. I guess the couple of questions that I have is on the proper calibration for the financials and, and really right sizing what that looks like. I know on East Main, we hired a consultant to help us with that. Are we looking at doing that again? Because I feel like really the question we want to be asking is, you know, how much FAR and density for that specific area will it take to get to the affordability we're looking for? Because sometimes I do hear the, well, we, if we don't do it right, we won't get the development, but I might think if we frame it from the standpoint of what does it take to get that win-win between the city and the developer, that would be very helpful. So that was one question, is whether we're going to get a consultant. The, the other question I have is, I know you talked about in Phase Two excluding Bell Red Look Forward, but I'm wondering if, in the timeframe that you're looking at, is that later or earlier than the Bell Red Look Forward? Because if Bell Red Look Forward is going to take longer, I would like this to be included so that we, we get it done sooner rather than later, so it wasn't really as clear to me about that. And then lastly, I just want to make sure I was clear about what I heard. When the mayor asked about the commercial fee in lieu, what I heard you say is that we're really trying to focus on incenting by raising the FAR on residential, and so if we started to open up the can of commercial, it would potentially dilute the efforts we're trying to focus on residential? So those are the main questions I have. Thanks.
I'll go ahead and start with the economic consultant. Yes, we will be working with economic consultant on this body of work. It's certainly, you know, beyond the expertise that staff has here. We also will be leaning some on the report that was done for East Main, as that's our most recent work done in the city, and then we will also be working with the development community, as well as the Affordable Housing Community and some of the others. So I think it's going to be a real iterative process as we work through this. So I think that'll be really important work that we're doing. Excuse me. In terms of Bell Red Look Forward, it is scheduled to be on about the same timing, but I can, you know, as part of this work, we can certainly confirm, and if for some reason that was being pushed much further out, we could look at potentially adding it, but I think there are a lot of, a lot of good reasons to leave it with Bell Red, so that can be used as kind of all of the levers being pulled at the same time. That's generally a really effective way of making change when we have all of the levers in place. So this effort is really just one lever, and we'll be kind of pulling on it as much as we can, but certainly at Bell Red, we have that opportunity to put all the pieces together. So if we can keep it together, we will, but again, if there's, for some reason, there's some significant lag, we could certainly bring that back for discussion. And lastly, you'd asked about the commercial fee in lieu. So at this point in time, we do not have a commercial fee in lieu system set up, and nor do we have the intention with this code initiative to do any sort of raising to commercial FAR. This one really is about raising the FAR for residential and creating something from that. I think that any commercial fee in lieu would be a separate work item, but one that, you know, could be a future work item, and certainly of, of great value.
Okay, so really just focusing on residential and really trying to speed this up as much as we can. Thank you so much.
Because, just to clarify, we can't add in a fee in lieu without giving something to the developers, so we'd have to give them increase.
We would need some sort of balance.
Yeah, got it. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. We heard earlier at the communication, nimble government is very important. A good government is nimble. So I'm really glad that, you know, the staff and us are nimble enough to recognize the market situation, market condition right now, you know, so that we want to develop this additional space to incentivize housing in the residential area. But ultimately, it's a market condition, it's incentive, the developers, the condition, the situation has to be ripe in that this, what we are doing makes sense. If the developers say, no, the time is not right, suddenly, you know, office space is going to be hot, we don't want to develop any residential, we're just going to do a model for, for, for the sake of developing it. So I believe that whatever you're doing is good, you know, you're working on it, you're answering the question, how to be nimble, how to make sure that we come up with the zoning, with the system, increasing the, you know, FAR so that it makes sense for the developers to do that. And so my, my, my sense is that that's important. You have to really understand and talk to the developers. They may already be telling you, hopefully, including the question was asked with the Bell Record, we don't know, but maybe the Bell Record, the developers are, we're looking at the same kind of situation, just want to jump ahead the gun. So I think you can also then be looking at anticipating the future, but that's beside the point. The point is what you're doing now. I think that's good, you're doing is the right thing. We need more affordable housing, and we are focusing on this for the developers to, you know, to shift their money to develop in this situation. It's, it's good, good for everybody, right? But that's, that's where the uncertainty is, I believe. So you really need to be talking very closely, have consultants talking, getting data, making sure that what you're offering makes sense, that they will want to do it. If they say, no, we're not going to do it, we're just going through an exercise, you know, we just have some fun. So I, so it depends on, you know, what going forward. I believe what you're doing is, how much more, I don't know, right? Developer will tell you. How much less, I don't know. And I think the mayor suggested, you know, maybe the, the, the lieu in development. Yeah. That all could work, again, depends on the developers. And so I think that's very key. You know, we're still working on a market situation, we've got to be smart, but the key is to be nimble. So that's all, the only thing I can add. You're doing the right things, making sure you meet their requirement. You know, the requirement has to be low cost to the developer, right? If it's not, they're going to do it, and there's a profit for them, right? And that's good. And so you, you'll find out, you know, we don't know what that is. And so, not much to add, except move forward and be smart, talk to the developers, get them to see that what we're doing, and listen to them, right? Listen to them, because they're the one that's going to build, we're not. So, good, thank you.
I think Councilmember Lee is speaking to the public process, which we're all looking forward to, including everybody, and thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, Liz and Nick Matthew, thanks for the great presentation. Liz, thanks for your great answers tonight, very clear and precise, really appreciate it, especially with your, coming off your, your sinus infection there. And Nick, I appreciate you mentioning on multiple slides there about the outreach and engagement process, really appreciate that, meeting all, all the different folks from, you know, business organizations, developers, and affordable housing groups, as well as residents, and appreciate you specifically mentioning the neighborhood associations as well on the Phase Two. So thank you for that. Yeah, I'm very supportive of this, you know, it's in line with our Next Right Work, it's in line with the AHS D3, it's in line with our planning for the 35,000 units, new housing units. It encourages residential development, encourages affordable housing development, and it really gets us already into the residential projects downtown going. And then I really appreciate the fact that we're using the IOC here to speed this along. So kudos to you to get this going, and I, I appreciate Councilmember Stokes wanting to push this even faster, but if we were to talk to the, you know, the East Main stakeholders right now, they would, they would have killed for 14 months. So, so I think we're moving really, really quickly on this. If we can move it quicker, I'd be all in favor of that as well, but appreciate this really well-schooled presentation and phase development here, so thank you.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Barksdale.
Also grateful for the staff innovating and, in terms of thinking about how we can do this and test it early on. I guess a question in terms of, I mean, we've talked about affordable housing, we know affordability is, has different levels, so I was curious about what levels we'll be prioritizing? And then, as part of the analysis, I imagine you'll look at a range of tools as a part of that. Will we have a chance to look at some of those combinations as part of the discussion in terms of the, the different tools and how they impact, like, AMI level possibilities, as well as sort of what the FAR increase is? I know it might get a little into implementation, but I'm really curious about, especially given during the public comment, you know, one of the points that came up was mandatory inclusionary zoning. So I guess I'm just curious to see, here's the FAR increase, and then here's the AMI level that will be housed, you know, whatever that range is, and then what tools we think will support that? Is that something you plan to bring back?
So at this point, we are still, you know, this is really initiation, so we'll still be kind of trying to find what the right values are. You know, right now, affordable housing and land use code is defined as 80% AMI or less, so we probably would be looking at that, but I think we also do need to look at, you know, potentially there's different ones, and you get a different bonus rate for different things. So there's a lot of different ways we can structure this, and we've been looking at some of that already. There will be an opportunity for council to have the next touch on this. We are planning to come back in a study session where we can provide some of the recommendations that staff has come forward with through our research and through all of that engagement that we'll be doing with the different community-based groups and the development community and so on. And we'll bring that back at the study session to talk through before we go to any sort of action on the IOC. So there will certainly be another touch, and at that point, we would provide more background on what we've heard and what we recommend after hearing that, how we've calibrated the system and what tools.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. I have a few questions and comments. First, I want to say I, I support initiation, which is the question we're being asked. I absolutely support the two different phases approach. I think an IOC is a really good way to go to kind of catalyze the additional housing while we work on the bigger picture and the greater details. So I think that's good. One thing I'm confused about, about the IOC, however, is what, as we sit here today, we are anticipating it will apply to, because I've heard, or I read in the packet, downtown, and I heard perimeter, perimeter overlay. So, and I looked at, it wasn't in the PowerPoint, but I looked at the downtown map, which, by the way, is really hard to read with the perimeter, perimeter overlay, but in case you saw me getting really close to my computer here. So, I mean, I personally think it should, we should look at not just the perimeter overlay, but DTMU, DTOLB, and DTR, basically any place downtown where residential is allowed. I think we should consider the IOC incenting it. But I didn't know, that's what I think, but what was proposed?
So, Councilmember Robertson, what we're currently proposing with the Phase One IOC, it would impact the perimeter, but it would also impact the downtown at large. So the increase in FAR would apply across downtown, and then we would make some adjustments within our perimeter overlays, where we're, are maybe a little bit more stringent about some of our FAR utilization, where you've got a site that might be in the downtown mixed-use district, but then you have a perimeter overlay that, that bisects that, and then maybe another perimeter overlay that is layered past that. And we are pretty kind of, we tightly control how FAR is moved around within those areas, so we'd be looking at relaxing some of that to let the FAR transfer more freely within a single project limit, so that's where the perimeter distinctions pulled out. We also offer some flexibility when developers provide affordable housing, we relax some of the standards, some of the step backs, some of the floor plate limits are relaxed a bit. So we would be looking at that toolbox as well, are there other things that we could offer when affordable housing is provided within the perimeter overlay? But the increase would apply across downtown.
Okay.
We'd just be looking at adjustments in the program.
Got it, that makes much more sense to me. And so the form constraints that I think, Nick, you mentioned, was that also only applicable to the, to the perimeter overlay? Relaxing the form constraints?
So, right now, we are looking to analyze the form constraints alongside the increase in FAR to ensure that any increase in FAR is also supported by some of our form and height limits. We're not looking at massive changes, you wouldn't be seeing, you know, 400-foot towers in factoria, but we are looking certainly at, at what might we do to kind of ensure that any FAR increase is supported by the, the form limits that we have in place.
Got it, I think that that's really smart, and I, and I absolutely encourage the outreach to be, not just to the business organizations, but to really the property owners in any of the zones potentially impacted by the IOC, on whether they have something ready to go. Like, you know, we, they, we talk when we're looking for federal grants about shovel-ready projects. If there are residential projects that people would like to build, but they are constrained, they can't build them under the code today, those are the kind of things that I think we should be prioritizing in the IOC to let people get moving. We need more housing, we need more housing, period, and then we need a portion of the additional housing to be affordable at different income levels. So the, I, I also would like to echo Councilmembers Zahn and I think Councilmember Lee's comment about whether we should have Bell Red in Phase Two. I would be very open to that, but I'll, I'll just share that with you, and then when we come back to initiate Phase Two, you guys can think about that. Because Bell Red, the Bell Red Look Forward, it's going to involve the comp plan, then the land use code. This is just a land use code change, it could be much faster, and e- even if it's just a step in the right direction for Bell Red, it might initiate and catalyze more development. The, the, I guess finally, with regard to adding additional regulations, as some folks have talked about, what you guys originally proposed was adding more flexibility, some flexibility on form, flexibility on transferring FAR, and increasing FAR. When you do that, the pro forma, which is the, the financial calculation developers make, gets a bit better. When you start adding more regulations, like, oh, you have to do mandatory inclusionary, you have to do fee in lieu, whatever it is, that makes the pro forma look less good. So I think it's really important that we, I would rather be a little bit more generous at the IOC if we're going to err. If we don't have the exact perfect formula, I'd rather err on the side that's going to see development, rather than be on the side that is a little bit too, a bit of an, a bit of an overreach. So I'm really glad we're getting, we're going to look at the economic analysis that we did at East Main, and that we are looking at having a consultant on that, because I think right sizing it, and I think this is something we really need to also talk to our stakeholders about, because we do want to right-size the regulation so that there's enough on the table for developers to make the risk, to make the investment, because if there's not enough upside, they will wait until land value goes up or zoning changes so that there is. And we want more housing, and we want it today, or as soon as possible. So, and then I would join my colleagues saying, I, I think this is very fast, this is one of the fastest timelines I've seen presented, and I would encourage us to make sure we stick to this. And, you know, obviously, if we could do faster, that's better, but I'd really want to see that IOC, I'd like to see it in early to mid-second quarter rather than the end. So, thanks.
So I heard a lot, and you have as well, I hear, you know, we want a lot of housing, and I hear we want a lot of affordable housing. So we'll be listening to the community and all the stakeholders, and we look forward to you coming back. And with that, is there a motion?
I move to initiate an MS, the land use code, to allow hard area, sorry, floor-area ratio or density for certain residential uses to incentivize residential over commercial developments, and direct the Planning Commission to process the Luca.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, that passes. Thank you so much. We're going to take a break, we're going to come back at 20 till, and I'm going to ask council to please come back at 20 till so we can move on with our, with our meeting. All right, well, we are back, and now we're on to our second study session item. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers.
The second item on your study session this evening is also part of the Next Right Work that you directed staff to bring back from your July 22nd meeting. Work that you directed staff to bring back from your July 22 meeting. This one is a proposal for initiation of work to reduce permit review and inspection fees for qualifying affordable housing projects. And again, we have our team up here, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Liz.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening again. So, we're moving on to another Next Right Work topic, as City Manager Miyaki mentioned. We are now, I think, at our fourth topic now, third topic for Next Right Work, so we are kind of getting through these. The one tonight that we're going to talk about next is Affordable Housing Fee Reduction. This was directed by council to look at it, and we are looking at reducing fees fairly significantly for affordable housing projects and/or removing them entirely. So, we've got some ideas for helping to initiate this work tonight, and then we would be, of course, be coming back to work out further details and move this forward. This does not, likely will not require a code amendment, land use code amendment. As envisioned, right now, it would mainly be process-oriented. There could potentially be some code amendments, but we will be determining this as we move forward. So I'll pass it on to Nick to start the presentation.
Great, thank you, Liz, and good evening. So, tonight, we are seeking council direction to initiate this action to reduce permit review and inspection fees for qualifying affordable housing projects. For our presentation, we wanted to talk about the objectives with this effort, also how we propose to process this program proposal, what the scope is that we have planned, and then some of the issues that we'll be tracking as we move this through the process, and then touch on some of the public engagement that we also are considering with this. So, in terms of objectives, as Liz noted, this is related to the Next Right Work, so on July 5, council initiated three actions. Micro Apartments was the first one out the gate that was on October 10. Tonight, you're hearing the other two actions, and this being that third one, to reduce fees for affordable housing projects. This is also responsive to the Affordable Housing Strategy, Action C5, which does call for ways to reduce cost of building affordable housing, and one of those costs, important costs, is the permitting fees associated with those projects. So, we are proposing to move this forward in kind of a three-step process. So, tonight, we're providing an overview of what we're proposing as a potential scope, as well as the schedule for processing this, and seeking that initiation from council. We'll then be bringing back a proposal based on some of the feedback we received today, as well as feedback that we receive through our public engagement process. We'll be reporting back on some of the implications with the fee reduction program, and be looking for council's input on the final scope at that future study session. And then, we'll also have a draft proposal for you to respond to at that study session as well. And then the last step would be getting council action to implement or execute on this reduced fee program. So to provide just a little background on Development Services and how we operate in terms of our permitting fees, so DS does operate on a full cost recovery model, so one hundred percent of the fees support the cost to review projects. That's both permitting as well as inspections, and then the review from the different disciplines within Development Services. Permit fees can vary pretty widely. You have some areas of the city where there's design review as a requirement, or you have other land use entitlements based on the project's scope. Other areas, you can move forwards with a building permit right away, so the fees are looking like they might be a little less in those areas. So, there's a lot of variables based on size of building, location within the city, and then the developer's kind of choice in terms of how they want to proceed with their project. So, we're finding, and we'll provide some examples of what we're seeing in terms of project costs, that we're assuming if we make those eligible projects, what those are looking like in terms of costs, but we have more work ahead in forecasting some of that information. And also, so fee reductions are not a new concept in the city, so at least since 1989, the city has been waiving some fees for qualifying affordable housing projects, including transportation impact fees as well as school impact fees. So I will now pass this over to Matthew to walk us through the proposed scope for this program.
Thanks, Nick. So what we are proposing for this is that it would apply to one hundred percent affordable projects, so that's being at or below eighty percent AMI. That would include permanent supportive housing, homeless services, and emergency housing. We're proposing that we waive up to a hundred percent of the Development Services fees. That would not include pass-through fees, so some of the fees that we collect go to utilities or state fees, so it would not include those. And with the overall goal, as Nick mentioned in the affordable housing tragedy, of reducing the cost of producing affordable housing. As you can see by this slide, our cost for fees for affordable housing can be quite substantial for affordable housing, and as Nick mentioned, they can vary widely. So you can see the difference here between the supportive housing project, which may not have required land use entitlement permitting, versus a project like the Polaris project, which required a lot more permitting, which means there's a lot more staff time, which means there's a lot of variability in our fees. So we are trying to encourage more affordable housing by eliminating these fees potentially, and lowering the cost of constructing that affordable housing within the city. And it furthers one hundred percent affordable projects within the city that are likely to require some sort of subsidy, so this is adding a subsidy to those projects that may require to be built in the first place. It does bring up some items that we need to consider when we move forward with this project. We are going to need to coordinate between Development Services, Finance and Asset Management, the City Manager's Office, to assess the potential financial requirements of this program, and the impact to DSD's cost recovery model, as Nick mentioned. And we are going to need to determine what that mechanism is, being where's the money coming from to fund these fee reductions? It has to come from somewhere when you take away a fee, so we're going to have to look at where it needs to come from, and then how we're going to apply this fee reduction, so whether that's an upfront reduction, if it's a refund, if it's some sort of amendment to the fee schedule. Those are all things we'll explore before bringing it back to you, which is step two of the program, as Nick mentioned. And we are going to explore setting an upper annual limit to the program. As we noted, with the wide variability, we can have years that have a large amount of fees that would be requested to be waived, and we can have years with much less, so setting that upper limit to make sure that there's an expectation with affordable developers on how much fee we can waive in a single year, so someone doesn't get caught out requesting a fee waiver and then not having funds available. The proposed public engagement would be with affordable housing advocacy groups. Obviously, this is an amendment or an update that's geared towards affordable housing. Those developers and builders, supportive housing providers and service providers, to make sure that whatever way we do the fee reduction, it works for their programs and works with their financing. And then we'll do some research into neighbor and peer cities to see what they've done. Several other cities in Washington and in the region have done some sort of affordable housing fee waivers, so we can look at what they've done to make sure that what we're doing lines up with things that have worked in other communities. And we will do study session and a public hearing on this, which also provides a chance for public input as we would with any sort of adoption. And finally, this evening, we are seeking direction to initiate action on this item to reduce permit review and inspection fees for qualifying affordable housing projects. And with that, Mayor, I will pass it back to you.
Okay, great. It just feels so good to be ending the year with this, all this affordable housing work. Thank you so much. Deputy Mayor, let's start with you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Another great presentation. Thank you so much. I know we've touched on this a little bit previously, and we're just initiating it tonight, so we're going to get another chance to get another touch on this later, but I appreciate the way you've scoped this process. And just a couple of quick questions. So, one, the fees associated with the, that we're already waiving for the transportation and school impacts fees, is that going to be part of your review, your fiscal review into the total impact? And what do those fees look like? And I appreciate the fact that you put in some examples here of what waiving the fees would look like, but I'm curious what those look like, the transportation and school impact, and then will that also be a part of that assessing the potential fiscal impact?
Yes, so Deputy Mayor, with our review on what the fiscal impact is, we do want to have an understanding of what are the subsidies currently offered, and then how does this kind of add to that, and what is the overall impact of this program with the school or transportation impact fee waiver program as well? So you have the full picture of what the impact is.
And then can you give me an example of what those fees looks like, the fees that we're currently waiving already?
I don't have the dollar amounts for those fees. They're usually based off of trips generated, and so there's kind of a tie-in with that, so we'd have to, we can certainly bring that back though.
Yeah, exactly. As long as it's part of that process, that would be great. And then also, I know that this is a concern of the mayor and others, and I remember the conversation about, and perhaps we're putting it into a separate bucket and bringing it back, but it was about expediting the permit versus just waiving the fee. Is that going to be part of this process here, or are we putting that in a separate bucket? I think the two are tied together in a lot of ways, and I know there's some interest there in terms of maybe even giving the option of which way they might want to approach that, but what are your views on that?
I can take that one, Deputy Mayor. So, we are planning to be back here in early January with scoping for the expedited permit review that was requested by council when we went for Next Right Work. So, we are still at a very preliminary stage, just in that I think there are some corollaries, and certainly in January, we can explore that a little bit more with council of how those two may work together. But, at our previous direction, those were two separate work items, but again, I think there are some corollaries that we may be able to take advantage of between those two as we work forward on the potential for expedited permitting, as we scope that body of work out.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor, this is a nice way to end the year. So, I am supportive of this work and initiating the work. I have one question about the eligibility. It talked about one hundred percent affordable projects, permanent supportive housing versus the housing, homeless services uses. Do we ever get, or could we ever conceivably get, applications for those types of projects from a not, from, here's a double negative, from a non nonprofits? Because if someone's building one of these for profit, which I think probably doesn't work on the pro forma, I don't know that I want to give them a fee cut if it's a for-profit project. So, just think about that, please, whether we want to limit this to nonprofit applicants. Second, with regard to where are we going to get the money, and whether there should be a limitation? I would, and I assume you'll be working with legal, but it seems to me that if we can use money that we have that directly comes in for affordable housing from the city that's revenue, that's expenditure constrained, that's the word I was searching, that would be the best situation. So fifteen ninety money, fourteen oh six money, potentially CBDs, block grants, and I think we could use REIT and TOT as well, although that would not be my first choice. We possibly could also get grants from the housing, State Housing Trust Fund, to fund this program. So I think that we need to be thinking, thinking smartly about where are we going to get the money to fund this, because the more funds we have for this, the more projects we can give this benefit to. I'd hate to have the third project or fifth project in the door in a given year, and they'll come back next year, because otherwise you have to pay the application fees, whereas the person before you didn't. But that's, money's not unlimited, so there has to be, I understand we'd have to be a limit. That's why I think we should really look for these types of funds that are constrained for uses for affordable housing, like the ones I mentioned. So, when this comes back, will you have the way to fund the program figured out?
I can't say I'll have all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, but yes, we will have some, you know, some thoughts about how we're going to do this. One of the things we've talked about, a lot of different ideas, and yes, we will be working with the lawyers to see, you know, how we can push funds around, but one of the other things that we've thought was very important is that there is a sustainable income source for this, so that we are not scrambling every year trying to figure out how we're going to pay this year's bills, as it were. So we are looking at it as sustainable, and we're looking, trying to look under all the different rocks to find out, you know, where this funding can come from, but we definitely will be bringing that back as part of our further work. I did briefly want to ask a little bit about the nonprofit. So you had mentioned potentially limiting it to a nonprofit developer. I think some affordable housing may, strictly affordable housing projects could be potentially done by a for-profit developer. I think it's unlikely that we would see a lot of permanent supportive housing or some of the other ones, but I think there may be some mix in there, but we'll do some more research on that and come back with more on that for council.
Yeah, and it's the nonprofit, the affordable housing, one hundred percent affordable, that I'm less worried about, it's the other types of, that I want to make sure that it's limited to nonprofits. And yes, and I agree, we need to find a sustainable funding source. That's why I was thinking the fifteen ninety or the fourteen oh six money. Fourteen oh six is a twenty-year money source, but the fifteen ninety is not limited in time, so that might be a really good way to go about funding the program. Thanks.
Councilmember Barksdale.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to have the short side. I appreciate the discussion that's happened, and look forward to this work, coming back to council as I support initiating it. Thank you.
I'd just say, as the deputy mayor said, I'm very interested in pairing this with some expedited permitting for a developer putting in affordable housing that would pay the full fees but could save money by having the permit done sooner. So, it seems like having this choice would be, would be good, so I'm looking forward to initiating this work and then bringing that other work forward as well. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I thank you for bringing this back. This is all the necessary ingredient to encourage affordable housing, basically to reduce the cost, make it easier. But I also support Councilmember Robertson's primarily statement about making sure that we, our own city's budget, you know, operation doesn't really get any negative impact, or if it does, we need to know what it is, so that we know how to budget for your operation, for the city's operation. And we're looking at three projects can be up to a million dollars, so I don't know if we're going to have a hundred project, that's going to be lots of money. So there needs to be some consideration of a cap, some kind of constraint. I think Deputy Mayor also mentioned that, it makes sense, so that we have some reasonable anticipation, control, and management over what we can do, right? We can't just have a blank check, say, hey, anybody come, you get it. And I agree that if it's a nonprofit entity that's doing this, we're already, we just went through this discussion about affordable housing to encourage development by private developers. So, you know, so there are ways to give them encouragement, how to, you know, increase affordable housing, so we don't have any double-dip duplication or whatever to stir people to do one thing or the other, right? It's got to be fair, equitable. But finally, I think it's important that, the question I have, I don't know how it works, when you say that we waive a million dollars a fee, is that a million dollars actually out of the city's pocket that we actually have a million dollars left to work with? Or actually, it's a fee we charge, and we really don't use that, all that money, you know, just additional profit that we use to run other operations? So what is that nine hundred thousand dollars mean to your department?
Means we have nine hundred thousand dollars less in revenue. So, Development Services is a fee-supported business line for the city, and so we do charge for our services. We receive some small amount from the general fund, mainly to cover some of our code compliance work and some of our administrative work, but the vast majority of our But the vast majority of our work is paid for by the fees of the development community. So if we do not have that, we would be in a deficit from the Development Services Department. So we would not, you know, we would have to find a way to backfill for that. And that's why we're looking to some of these other sources to be able to make Development Services whole for the work we're doing.
Right, right. So it's a little complicated then just saying we're losing that much money. So I think when you analyze all this, I'm sure that you will, you know, come back with all that information so we can understand what is the impact to you guys and to the city, to our operations? And what do we need to make sure that we can contain it so it doesn't get out of hand, right? Or give to the wrong people or whatever. Okay, thank you. That's.
I hear Councilmember Lee asking you to consider that and bring back strategies on that. Thank you. Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I agree with my colleagues that, I'm really glad we're talking about this and how we reduce barriers as much as we can and move with more urgency around affordable housing. I was glad to hear that we already have a fee waiver for the transportation and school impact fees. So just wanted to clarify, when it says not including pass-through fees, is that utility connection fees? Is that what you mean by that? I was trying to understand that. And then I also agree with my colleagues about the sustainable funding options and making sure that what we're putting in place is sustainable. Whether we can do more with leveraging 1590, I know we've talked about being able to bond against future revenues to be able to do something. Whether if we actually saw a lot of people banging on our door wanting to take advantage of this, that's actually a win. And so I might say that instead of putting a cap on it, we might want to think about what are some other sources of funding we might be able to leverage? And then actually thinking that, are there some additional legislative lobbying and advocacy we can do at the state and federal level to look at different funding sources? I would say that the National League of Cities with upcoming president, or actually current president, Mayor Woodard, one of her platforms is housing and affordable housing. So is there some more advocacy we could be doing around getting more funding so that we can keep this going? I would hate to have a cap so that if we actually had affordable housing, that's going to be 100% permanently affordable, that we would not provide the kind of resources here and it becomes a rush to the door because there's a cap? Somehow that, that isn't, I don't think what we want to have on the door. What we want to say is we're trying to incent as much affordable housing as we can, and we want to be able to be helpful. And then I also agree with my colleagues about whether we can look at the time too, because time is money. So is there more we could do with expediting those permits? Is there some, I would say, assurances we can provide the affordable housing developers that says that when you come with a, with an application for affordable housing, we are going to work with you to get that permit processed within whatever number of months you think is appropriate so that there's more reliability and their ability also for financing and expediting? Whether some of this might include having an ombuds person that would help affordable housing developers when they come in the door for, for help? And that might already exist. So those were some, some questions I have. I'm just really excited about getting going on this. So thank you.
I'll go ahead and take a start at some of these, and then I'm going to pass it off to either Matthew or Nept to answer your first question. But we will absolutely be working with Genesee Atkins as well and talking about what are those opportunities to look for other sources of funding beyond what we know immediately in our world. So I think that's a great thought and something that we'll, we'll continue to work on. In terms of the, looking at time also, you're somewhat previewing our conversation for January. So in January, we are going to be talking about what we can do to move affordable housing projects through the system more quickly and more efficiently. And part of that, you know, could be some sort of project manager or ombudsman or, you know, we've got a lot of different ideas. We sat down in a room one day and came up with, you know, a list this long of different things we can do. So that is part of that conversation in January. So rest assured that, that is not lost, and we will be picking up that thread and moving forward with that January 12th, I believe it is. And maybe Matthew, do you have some ideas about what those pass-through fees are? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so some examples would be fees we pass on the Cascade Water Alliance when we do permitting. There's also a small state fee that we have when we do permitting. So it's going to be fees like that that we'll collect through our permitting process, but we then move on to other departments. So the plan is not to impact other departments or other entities outside of the city when we reduce these fees where we would basically have to pay those fees for the developer. Those would still be collected and passed on to, to other departments or other entities that, that have those fees that are required.
So that, that might be another Genesee question about whether for some of those other fees, they could also be looking at waiving some of those fees as well, potentially. Thanks.
Okay. And Councilmember Stokes, I know you wanted to add a bit on the parks levy that passed. You can do both.
Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead and get the parks thing because, before I forget, like I did before. I wanted to also recognize the Bellevue Downtown Association and Patrick Bannon and their organization of helping on the levy. And Patrick, thank you very much. And my apologies for skipping it at the beginning, but anyhow. So I think this is a good conversation. The thing, it's, we're talking about, I love it when we're talking about a specific question and then we go into other programs and stuff and that, and we get some jewels out of that sometimes. It's, it's interesting because the thing is initiate the action to reduce the permit review and inspection fees for housing projects. And I think we're all saying it's a good idea, but we're also seeing there are other ways. And one of the things to take into account is that I believe that what you'll find, you kind of hinted on it a little bit, is that having, reducing a fee is different from taking money directly out of an account that we have and putting that in. I mean, there are ways to adjust it in terms of the cost of labor and all those kinds of things. So, and it's also just another way for the city to actually directly impact and, you know, carry out its, its commitment to affordable housing. So it's, I think we have a good balance on that. And it, and it's easier in some ways. The reduction of fees, again, it's, it's not necessarily a dollar for dollar in the whole thing. So it's a very, has proven to be a very good way to handle it. It doesn't mean we won't continue. And also, if we take it out of the 1590, then we're, we're lowering the activity we could do there because there are some differences in this. So I think we're looking at all these pieces. You know, waiving the, the school fees is again, another way for the city to help the schools without actually putting cash into the schools. And it's, so it's, it's a combination, I think, is why we're doing this. And the questions that have been asked about, I think, are very good in terms of how we balance that. And the whole goal is to how much, how much can Bellevue do to support the affordable housing that we all want to be doing, done? And this is, I think, a very good way, and I think you're laying it out in a good way. And these are some good questions to look at, what would the balance be on this? But it's, it's been proven to be a very good way in the past in a number of areas. And again, it's, you know, the money has to come from somewhere. And it's a, again, a balance on that. So I, I think it's, you've done a really good job, and we can put something in place in this particular area that will work very well and will, will be a, also show a commitment directly from the city to make these things happen. And sometimes the city putting money into it doesn't show up as much as doing something like this. So I think it's a very good program and it's a good, it's just a piece of it. It's not a big piece of it, but it's a very important piece. And I think you've, you've covered it all, so I appreciate that and looking forward to getting this in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so is there a motion?
I move to initiate work on a proposal to reduce permit review and inspection fees for qualifying affordable housing projects.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's excellent. So the last part, piece on our study session was Intergovernmental Issues, which is a very good read in the packet. I suggest that everybody do that. And we're going to move on to three ordinances that we have already had a lot of information and discussion on, that at the end of those discussions, we ask staff to bring them back for us to vote on. And so this is the night to do it. Mr. Miyake, anything else you'd like to add?
With that introduction, Mayor, I'm just going to turn it over to Tara Johnson, our Comprehensive Planning Manager and Community Development, to give you some brief staff reports on each one of the ordinances before you take action. Tara?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor in Union House, council members and members at the public. As City Manager Miyake mentioned, and even Mayor Robinson, staff came before you in November. We did a study session on the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, and council provided us with direction to return at a future date with potential opportunity for action. So with that, I have a very brief presentation and happy to answer any questions following that.
And Tara, you're going to present on all three ordinances at this time, correct?
That is correct.
And then we will vote each one in individually after you're, you present all three of them.
I will be going over both the 2022 CPAs, and then there are three associated ordinances. And I'll be going over each of those ordinances as part of, I have a slide that illustrates what the three ordinances are for action tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So as we said, staff is here this evening based on direction that council provided at the November 14th study session. As you, as you're aware, you are very familiar with our annual comprehensive plan amendment process. Under state law, the Growth Management Act, we can only amend the comprehensive plan once a year through a legislative process, which requires a public hearing with a planning commission, and then final action by city council. So as we said, we were here on November 14th, and before us tonight, we have, I'll provide a brief summary of the two city-initiated comprehensive plan amendments. This year, we did not have any privately initiated, submitted. The planning commission utilized decision criteria that's in our land use code that provides a criteria for evaluating these amendments. And the planning commission did come before you as well, the planning commission vice chair, and provided their recommendation. So as part of the 2022 annual amendments, city council initiated two amendments. One in support of adding policies to the transportation element and the downtown subarea plan in support of curb management. The second city-initiated amendment relates to the Affordable Housing Strategy Action C1 and Phase 2 of that. Phase 1 went through a similar process a couple of years ago. And again, planning commission provided, held a public hearing and provided recommendations on both the comprehensive plan amendments. So a little bit of detail on curb management. As I, as I mentioned in the previous slide, we, we looked at adding policies to both the transportation element as well as the downtown subarea plan. Policies would apply citywide based on the transportation element policies in support of curb management. It also provides direction to create a more coordinated system within our transportation network. And moving forward, a little bit on Affordable Housing Strategy Action C1, Phase 2. As, as I noted, we had Phase 1, which went through a similar process in 2020, followed by land use code amendment. So this work will really inform future work with a, with a similar land use code amendment. We're adding two policies into the housing element as part of this proposal. One policy would allow rezones on certain eligible properties, also include some of the, some of the criteria, which would be better clarified or more detailed as part of the land use code amendment process. We're also adding a policy, and this was something that the planning commission recommended, directing city staff to reach out to religious organizations and really provide assistance through the process. In addition, we're also adding a note on the comprehensive plan land use map identifying that there's potential for rezones for these certain eligible and qualifying properties. So as we said, there are three associated ordinances. One ordinance is of course to adopt policies in support of curb management under ordinance number 6707. There's a second policy, there's a second ordinance that would adopt the changes for Affordable Housing Strategy Action C1, Phase 2, under ordinance 6708. And then we have an umbrella ordinance which adopts the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendments, and that is under ordinance 6709. With that, I'm going to hand things back to you, Mayor, for, for discussion and any follow-up questions and action.
Okay. So as we said, we've had a chance to review these previously and had questions answered. Any other questions or comments before we take this for a vote? Okay, not seeing any. Deputy Mayor, could you please make the first motion?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance 6707, adopting the 2022 amendments to the transportation element and downtown subarea plan, comprehensive plan amendment pursuant to the Growth Management Act.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next one.
I move to adopt ordinance 6708, adopting the Affordable Housing Strategy Action C1, Phase 2, comprehensive plan amendments pursuant to the Growth Management Act. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the third one.
I move to adopt ordinance 6709, adopting the city's 2022 amendments to the comprehensive plan as separately set forth to ordinances numbers 6707 and 6708 pursuant to the Growth Management Act. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And they pass. Thank you very much, Tara. Well, this has been quite a year for the city and for the council. We've, we've done a lot. We've accomplished a lot this year. And we are not going to get, we're not going to resume our meetings until January 9th, 2023. And every year, I write a poem to do a synopsis of the year, but I didn't write my own. This year, I'm going to read somebody else's. And this is called "White Eyes" by Mary Oliver. Kind of summarizes, I think, some of the council feelings after such a busy year and moving into the break. "In winter, all the singing is in the tops of the trees, where the wind bird with its white eyes shoves and pushes among the branches, like any of us. He wants to go to sleep, but he's restless. He has an idea, and slowly it unfolds, from under his beating wings, as long as he stays awake, but his big round music, after all, is too breathy to last. So it's over, in the pine crown, he makes his nest. He's done all he can. I don't know the name of this bird, I can only imagine his glittering beak tucked in a white wing, while the clouds, which he has summoned from the north, which he is taught to be mild and silent, thicken and begin to fall, into the world below, like stars or the feathers of some unimaginable bird, that loves us, that is asleep now and silent, that has turned itself into snow." And with that, we are adjourned.